Okay, I remind everyone that the dinner I have parks tonight. Visiting with the city council. Uh, just hold up your hand in a few minutes here. Have a prayer for the provisions and you will call on me. Give back in three minutes. Three seconds. And we'll go on then, so put all hands on prayer. Father of the parade for presences of the present and everything you do. A sweet reminder that your verses are due every morning. Your love is passed through your statements.
My allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands on commission.
Okay, community comments. About three minutes to deny issues, concerns, complaints and feedback at the council. Uh, we get back on anything, sure listen. But here we have to say, if you raise your hand and you want to talk, I'm sorry. Let it later push that side.
Hello, hello, maybe get some updates about the village public library. I'm a library manager over there. So summer meeting is officially over and I'm happy to report that we met our summer reading bowl of sophomore year points. So that means that we donated for our gift over and we donated for positive to the regional. But that we dispersed through food sites and children's sites. Um, but it is not too late to still afford your reading with months of June of July and still on that. And then we have a private by the fifteen. And then what I really excited to say is for the months of August and September, village library is hosting a small portion of the whole resource collection from downtown library. So we should come by and still see that collection. It was curated and donated by the membership foundation. Alright, thanks.
Okay, let's go.
Oh, I just wanted to verify we're ready for not doing the DVD tonight. What I say now, we can say stuff that we say. Maybe comes up again.
We, we have the album on, we'll break out right after this. Uh, take a roll on. Put it on.
Okay, I just don't want to wait till everybody talk. Yeah, it's gonna be something that we do with the. Say I know where to place it. Okay, I just, I just.
We got a lot of shit. Okay. Let's go, I don't really do that, I don't even mind. Uh, regarding the bottom five. Time a visit to the youth march.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you see, Councilman Collins is not here this evening. He attended a funeral out of town. Requested this to be continued, uh, so that he could attend this in his ward. And we also visited the cat at that and they are requesting attendance. Uh, to push this back, but it's not pushing back. Um, so.
I'll make a motion, push it.
Well, David, second one, Sonny, David.
Yay.
Emily.
Yay.
God, yeah. So I think, yeah, we should pass this forward to continue to be on the.
Thank you all.
I keep it.
Okay, we'll go back to our. Uh, for both, just make sense of the due date. All the, uh, council committee. Yay.
Emily.
Yay. We have to require our due date consideration of resolution eight seven twenty three D. C one, C two, property advocate under the vice.
Comes up here, we've passed its charge without. Okay, twenty hundred West Tefner, which is adjacent to Duffner Park on the east. Currently vacant empty zone worship training center. Currently zone C one restricted, which is the places of worship. Uh, new property owner wishes that that was only C two. With a medical office, technical dental office. Dentist, uh, has the building to work with in West. His breakfast is property and wants to build a new data center on this area. City under section twenty four oh one sixty nine, there's C one restricted. Commercial district, this is permitted with church sent on mosque. Places for gathering of people studying worship. And C two, the use includes office for corporate businesses, including medical offices. Like I said, two story buildings. And you tell them it's designed to have a clear story on it. The single story building. They can see their action to recommend a Google office. Including three additional parking spots that are over the matching while the parking. Duffner Parkway right there outside by twenty three. Let's take the corporate. Council issued various to suit the matching parking. Uh, they feel that government will enter plan. AB C, AB G, Glad is the architect that recommends, uh, requesting on the guys property owner. Property English was searched as conducted, sort of thought by the cessar office from cap two twelve. Property owners and no concerns, no objections on it. And hearing that you can see how Jim Sajak from AB Glad Architecture spoke a little project. So he's recommended approval of this and recommended them to have three parking spots for.
Anybody notice this cross form or right next to a farm? It's been there. Talking almost long about the village. Is that all there is? He's done a little large line. This is remarkable addition to what we had here. It's gonna cut out that little corner area and like carry a bit of those things. Shot down there with the stragon. So maybe people near the east basically. So we were just ready to vision, we got a comment. It's got to be. Go look at the land. Okay. I'm watching. I'll say that. Yay.
Well, wait, yeah.
Yeah.
Sonny.
Yay.
We should pass this four to zero.
The machine is only two. Consideration of resolution eight seven twenty three D. Regarding a purchase of five national pro vehicles. RC management.
The lease purchase of five dollars for ring those from RC bank. Seventeen, fifty seventy thousand a year fees, which is a line projected to capital.
This is, and this is very, very. Need move, and then we all talk about every year, we talk about fake on cars. The only thing does have that. And we do jobs and, and we're into this work, so. We'd rather be able to do that, it's a good year to try and do it because we find product. So I appreciate that most customers. So from the end of discussion. Got motion.
I'll say.
David.
Yeah.
Emily.
Yay.
Love. Sonny. Yay. If you don't watch it, I hope it's. You guys are very hard, if I say anything, you, you do.
I actually, I didn't have just a sniff of the first. On that RC bank. How they all just do these? I didn't see them or they actually happened?
Well, they see it through them. Uh, they're, they're trying to make the mechanisms on their basis. City for big theaters.
When I saw that.
Which I. Number seven, consideration of resolution eight seven seven. Part of a suspension, uh. American legal publishing, what is that?
American legal, American legal publishing.
American legal publishing. Uh, for online codification.
Okay, that's that we've got quotes from two of the biggest vendors that are out there to do this service. And American legal was substantially less than Newco was. Newco uses harbor cities and chain ordinances very frequently. American legal publishing is the best for us, for anyone that is not familiar with how our app works. Try my best to.
You're gonna practice it?
Nope. I'm just gonna.
I don't know.
If you look, see, we have our city code link here on our website. And. Okay, so you can click on anything in our city code by any chapter and read it its entirety or go up here to the corner and click the button, click time and text the keyboard and you can see that. If you go through that, maybe that's for all twenty four chapters. Open up here, my audience, you can tell they did not bring their glasses for meetings. Had one left open, but I think I closed it up.
He spelled. He picture.
So this what your online code looks like. You have your pending ordinances, charter, all of your titles, all of chapters in there. I want some of the public utilities. Click right on that, click on each section, pull it up or I can read or scroll through it. Or I can come up with this nice little search box. Right up here. Let's say I want to know something about rod seal permits. And here brings up everything in chapter three, chapter five, and chapter three, chapter three, chapter eleven. Everything through the still code depends to that topic. It's right in front of the papers. So that is what we're proposing with American legal publishing as. Annual cost and eight hundred ninety five dollar one time setup fee and four hundred ninety five annual maintenance fee. And they said they should have a program about a hundred days, but it should be about time we're ready to walk on the website. It's one of the look on website. What's the? It's really simple and that all they're doing is taking our videos, putting them into H T mall, several feature. Newco is kind of more of a, there's more features and more catalog for a lot of big cities that have more. Yeah, I was too. I'm a tough recommendation make to you guys and we're just, we're gonna propose that by this election.
Validating the case point. Uh, but.
Yeah, they, they totally work for multiple. They, Newco is actually founded by City Plus who is doing our website. And they sell the speaker with them, which most people that sell it don't realize is they're publishing.
Yeah, well, I mean, both use Newco and, and I, I've used, I've used, we started with.
We had Newco, we didn't have.
Oh, you had Newco. They are probably a lot. Can't figure out that wasn't the one, so I'm sorry.
Over two options, we need all four. Oh, okay.
Also, I think the giant.
I reckon what we do is when we do pass the order, we send it to them. You got order daily updated.
Just for example, I like the idea of police cars going off the post. I mean, several guys down the street to see the car. Did the village police have a living development? Someone left a gut reading and they could, they could.
As long as they don't live in the fish.
Vehicle policy. We do take on policy for vehicles as we were mining to time. If they live in.
I'd love to see your, I'd love to see in Oklahoma City, your building, police guard down the street. This guy sends a message someone.
Get your neighbors to apply.
Okay, maybe, I just, I was just a simple question.
What is the motion?
So, David, David.
Yeah.
Emily.
Yeah.
Love.
Yeah.
Sonny. What's funny? Okay.
Number eight, consideration of charter review committee. Review of the city charter and area of the city council.
Yeah, this is really more of a discussion and I just put consideration on it. I'm not going to ask for action on this, just look at it. It'd be nice to have some people on this and have experience sitting in these seats that have dealt with the charter. You know, probably some people that have no clue what the city does or what the city charter. I don't know, we're trying to find a couple of people on these board to do this. Some kind of best thing to post on social media. Anyway, because part of the people selection down there, you know, what's the best way to find people? The heck of us that they care and interest want to help us. And it's just to look over the charter and see what is there and see if there's something better out there and come back. Do you have recommendations? Any change in charter would require of the people, but we have elections every year. So come back to twelve changes and people will put all the love out there. Keep that in mind.
The plan, so they want to change the charter or this.
Not specifically in ordinance, non existent ordinance, that could be. We could have made the ordinance. Charter such as any purchase that we make requires two proposals or two bids. Sometimes you find something at the cheapest price and then you spend more time trying to find similar likewise comparison for it. We should have a policy that we will shop around and be competitive. Money wise way rather than.
Think of the charter like the Constitution. Uh, the charter kind of set out how many thousands of dollars are how old were the. There are some things that are going to be greatly always going to be changed, like the time period or five. But it is. Uh, yeah, that's the meetings for council.
We change that the business on life. Still.
Do you change the date of regular meeting, like the first meeting, whatever. Let's add the current charter. Do you change that?
Um, I, you know, we, when, when we decided to do our last twenty year plan. We went through, uh, the process of getting, I think, some, some business people, some party, some, uh, obviously residents, um, in, in. Were there, you guys, you, you, you guys were the ones that, that were the, were the representatives of the council. Were there twentyish people? I don't know if we need that many.
It was something like that. Made a lot of. I think that's one. Specific.
Yeah, that was, that was a vision, that was a village vision. And this is, that's the motive, you know, we got.
I think in the process, we sit there and say, if you council members. About twenty pages in the actual charter itself, so it's not in. Look representative of boards. Former council member that's inside, current council member and staff. I don't know any that I offered it. I just talked to someone more about.
Well, that, I mean, that's. But we, we have a filter process, so my thanks, I need, and you're saying the same thing. I need to get quite a bit of understanding of permission. Right. It's almost like you go.
For, for rubber, Oklahoma City does their charter. They have each word of their. They have people who, who is not city government. And I think they were essentially specialists on determining. Been around for a while. And then they kind of present the really topics that are covered in the charter. And the door of the city can determine how difficult. This is no review of this law of the charter. This is what our current charter says. A potential way that it could be improved. Talk about. But I want to speak as kind of operating in similar places, but we aren't.
Probably have an initial need to go over the charter section, section twenty. A little bit of what each section says is like. Very more of a. So the first order. Can we do that in six sections or something? So rest of the second P H D. It's about fourteen pages of text.
Yes, it's, that's quick, it's gotta help it out to fifty at least.
The goal is not to add to, it's to clarify and.
Do some of that.
Simplify language, I mean, most, uh, five meanings and most things that I've heard often have color meaning. So would, they obviously attracted.
Yeah, so there's ten articles in there, two sixty five. Yeah, so there's 10 articles in there, 260, yeah, five sections.
Okay. We're not 500% behind with the. My hours that are done, to the city, I think, and a couple teams here and there.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't get to go without anything, man, I go to. I, I think what we're running from is, with you guys and the D A or C, whatever.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's been a great charter, it's a good charter, just time to change it. I think it's modernization or update. Yeah, I think we, we could probably get something out on social media, asking for anyone's interest and then, I, I think it would be two per word. The point of maybe see what we get in, or give someone a mind, someone lives.
I think you need to do that, I think that would be a good idea. More specific.
The, the, you, you could charge. It's more looking for. Four lanes on Village Drive.
No, hold on, you didn't, you didn't track it.
We're not leaving express lane and the government, it's not on all.
Yeah, no, I think so.
Let me, I mean, two councilors, you know, two or three, he had track or one. Or three people that count on the. Might have one or two on the P M Z that might be.
At, at the same thing, we got, I think, of course, again, was the, the vision thing, but, I want to say we can't have, and then I think we had like a large, like four, maybe. To, to fill it out, 20, I think 20 was the number.
Didn't, I think it was a large.
Yeah, 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 and I'm, I'm not saying we do that, but I'm just saying, uh, probably two, two per, probably two per four.
Yeah.
I think if you were, I think that maybe.
So that's a charter.
Oh, he can't read, he can't read back. Why won't we nominate him to the program? Just, just to let you know, I'd like to agree, you work so well together.
Put together a little summary of duty roles, expectations, what we're actually doing, a couple of that looking, of before, just awesome. Volunteers out of community and this. How many bars, two shares? Use the color. I'm happy with that.
Okay, what do you need further comment or discussion?
Good, nothing, child play, I hear a lot.
That's a child.
You are the, as in the, we want to report and enforce correspondence in most art of the treasures reported.
Let's have a busy month after the budget's passed, getting everything handed into our system and soon enough, uh, we've been working with the auditors, turning information over to them for our annual audit. Kind of rare, we have an auditor that looks at your stuff in July and you have stuff that's in July, so. Appreciate all of that, I didn't forget about some of that, but we'll record as I get busy in October, November, so. That was an H P C, a local consultant from here and down, it's been our audit force. I have questions on what was in the treasury report for packets, definitely more happy to try to answer that than I could.
So did it all work out this time?
So you got me, it's now officially ours, very formal system.
Create an interview. Dave and I, yeah, we're, we're officially on our system.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Say for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a transition period that we've got.
Part of it, so we'll bring back the budget amendment, I think that's a little short on capital works, a little heavy on, on, on the road by working for it, so we hit the target pretty close.
And I, I know that now that the interest rate, you guys are looking for the highest interest rates.
Oh, yeah. It's pretty much a monthly thing. We're still getting five, I'm a little over five right now. They think it's gonna go down then.
Um, it's, it's always less of a big addition to our total market sales tax and including that. And just, you know, look at our, look at our, our, our several areas that are, we've been in a lot of times, so, and just, it's nice to compare also to, uh, these months, which is very important. That's what I'm saying, I, I've always thought this on all of them, because you can say, sometimes it's a trend, or maybe using something or games, or maybe you want to make sure that they notice if we. Tell them, you know, the, 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 the. Those stores seem to be doing pretty, pretty fair and, uh, like, uh, all our tax bases, base, uh, folks, retail, wholesale and back end seem to be okay. Just a comment, any, any else you guys?
You say, so, so the issue?
So far, yeah, so there's a. Lot of work.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's next door, it's talking about Park Center Plaza, uh, yeah, it is, there's a lot of work going on there, uh, they're busy, um, still projecting to be done on the timeframe, uh, so they're a little behind, a lot of the, the smaller workouts, electrical, plumbing, airification, uh, no major issues. We meet with law and wind construction every other week, uh, they do a great job of communicating, the law is very responsive and, um, wind is good, they ask some questions, uh, there have been some questions asked about the medians at the library, those will be irrigated with trees in them and some landscaping in them, the landscaping is coming in a tail end of it, it's better. Decided it would be better to do all landscaping at once, so this piece, this piece, this piece, so we've had some weeds out there, we're breaking down, knocking down, the parking lot doesn't look pretty, but it will work, it's all done and they will tie in very well, uh, with everything else. We did that, the light pole that was in the gas line easement from, company has the tanks back here, we had to do that part, they never marked their easement, um, wind is taking lead on that to resolve, we pretty much said, yeah, we hit it, not like he, he fits in, so, I, I think we'll get that resolved okay. Uh, Gladstone Drain Project, construction work was completed on Saturday, they're working on cleanup today, probably get much done this morning. Okay.
They were there, and I was thinking, my house is a little rain, and there were a lot of people quitting our truck, and we were buying, they thought we were coming out.
Rear Construction did a great job on that project, we have a street overlaying, new reconstruction on the street bond, uh, didn't learn before we do the next phase, now we're doing a job, came to our residents that. We cannot do base repairs to fix the foundation of the road before we overlay it, I made a lot of calls to people, they're off their street, it was worse than the, we had to work it up. It does, and it will, the lifetime, you know, they all base your work done by one crew, and they come and they're going to be over there, so.
We'll give it a better.
Uh, or, or, I went to the back way, we had to overlay, um, several more streets. Not there's both, you, click right, and break it off, so. Which is service and service work, which was a long, real, but it was like a very. Kudos to Rudy, Rudy, kudos to Rudy.
I apologize, I park a hit something, because I didn't hit print on my report before I left my office, put a piece, please, I'm trying to go over, I remember saw that. Uh, we have a lot of contact with local, the Y R traffic authority, the transit authority, for our contract, for additional, there's many people in West City who not renew, uh, the contract that we had. We have between 10 and 12, we have about 10 to 12 people that we met and the rest of, the rest of the municipal offices for. What are our options? Really none. The, the ability to jail ourselves in southern one we need to, but most of the cities still do this full jail, don't want to take someone else's, or don't care, but most still have it, wish they. So we're working on that, and we're certain the charter doesn't, it's going to call a hope doctor. No, they do, kind of jail or. We don't want to take people to jail, I don't, I mean, but I, some people, they.
One year special.
Times, you know, yeah, don't say one, that we're gonna have to take to go home to city jail, do whatever. Rushing courts, so, but it's, we have to.
Did you say Midwest City?
Midwest City, we're using Midwest City Jail, they are not registered. And they, they also would not take them early prisoners, so they, so a lot of them wouldn't give you a name, if you start that, they, they.
The one that's.
Instead of going to U I's and.
No, they, they, it's more to the academy on, on the district court charge, yeah. Figure who's in.
Oh.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Give me a question. If, if we do something wrong for Midwest City, they just decide to shut down their, outside their city?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta bet that.
I just don't think it was convenient, conducive for them, and it's taken up space and strategy. You know, we, it wasn't regular, it wasn't frequent, but also operational for us, we had an officer out, you know, across panel, which I mean, that transported the company and helped, and was seeing the partners. Now, they just, I just don't think it was feasible for them, I think they're getting a question, and he means, and you don't want to take ours, and we're not in that business, we're not taking. I think I did that earlier on, that was, early on, that was very. And, um, uh, looking, I'm watching closely, uh, E M S, uh, Edmond has put out their R R P, I think they made a selection for E M S services. Uh, I think what they're looking at right now is whether it's going to be private company, many more ambulances, or say city vetting on it, uh, it's told the city purchase more than one of the ambulances, so I don't know, future, uh, does the holds? But, uh, they are the power, I don't know, I don't know, I've heard some of theirs should have any. Sorry, that was a rapid fire question, I turned away, did anyone talk about that at all?
Not for all of you, um, maybe I've got a few people that talk, so that's, this is the first time here about this.
Um, it's, uh, yeah, E M S is struggling, every E M S service struggle, everyone. E M S is standard, it was a white, gas station parking lot, like, call, versus, industry changes on, um, I wouldn't be surprised if Oklahoma City goes with their own E M S, that's just part of the. They'll, they're, they're.
Yeah.
They will fight contract with Oklahoma City, so I don't think we're going to be stuck.
No, I would be open to say, we're going to have to, uh, there, there is a. By and large, everybody, this, this, satisfied, and didn't get one set.
I haven't got complaints here, but across the board, um, COVID was just, uh, they've been waiting times, or police in fire, a lot more waiting times, and they are, they're making improvements, I think it's, I think it's dependent on Oklahoma City, what Oklahoma City does.
Forces of the, there's, uh, the, the, the public lands, we, twice this year, the bar, and yet second half, it's, 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 it's. It's amazing, E M S comes in and they do the thing, like, they have a village, part of our, the tourism, all of them guys, and the, and stuff like that. They worry about a lot, especially, but anyway, so they come in and, uh, as, as a, we know, like, uh, ambulance, the driver's open to, uh, oh, you mentioned, and he said, no, 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 no. He said, no, it may be really, it's better if you pay her to make sure, uh, they have a trauma, and, uh, trauma center, so they're sort of, say, uh, and I said, well, unfortunately. She has tons of records and they're all persons, so I'm not going to pay her, so, and so we, I had signed two forms that gave them the release to take their car. I've never had that.
She had a car, I have a house.
She had, Becky, no, this thought, we, first of all, Becky, my head. I'm first, Becky's coming back around, just, Becky, or somebody, or he, or she, on the street, or, or, that's, I would. So again, that's the first time I ever, I heard that, I know we were speaking to my, my, so I, you know, do the, 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 but it is, uh, this here person, she's good. Documented to White here, said the girl, they just walked back in on, you got to do what Rans, I'm playing, and all that's been moved, great things on that, so. You might have said Rans, and your daughter's got married, it's really great.
And that's it, sorry, all.
Yeah, you're on the spot, don't understand.
That's right, well, who's paying for this one? Is it?
So, anyway, this is thought, this is, this is. I think you guys, uh, you guys, um, I, I think, Mike, I know, that's, 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 the numbers, I have got a matter, there's online, that's, we're, we're, the long time, and there's that conversation, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, or five, eleven. What's the, what's the number you want, yeah, I just, they tried to make sense to like, I don't know, if they were talking there, that was, forty, or will manage that.
And retirement, yeah.
The thing is, the thing is, they're doing like, meaning for the back end, or, or, the company.
Most companies, I would.
Yeah, so, but I.
They will have a decision.
Yeah.
Most.
I have a great, to our, 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 the, the, similar, like, a person, that makes a difference for us.
Did Park Park know that, uh, vote, like, you used to? They, they were there for me, that's about, five minutes, morning, so, uh, they were much with the air, I got like, the, the, the.
What is our number? I don't know, so I think it's got to be two, five, or five, you. And how, let's imply, intersect, for the, for the, anyway.
Don't say longer than it is, it should, I saw the fire, that's why I was, so, they're being, made available, that, 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 absolutely, the time, their jobs, and things being on Mars, and then. And there's no reason for the process, I would consider, on, about, I think, that's driving, that.
I don't think that we can do it more efficiently or effectively, but that's expensive enough. And I don't, you know, I'm surprised when we pull this together, I was, it's just on our radar, we're watching it, but we're gonna have lots of, not, nobody's, uh.
All, all my people. I think we're, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm just the, 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 the.
I just saw that, that, that was part of. But, no, hold on, let's, or not, let's, that, you come in. I actually can't remember who all this left out of that, I mean, um, I don't know if you're comfortable about it, I don't know. One way, guys, everyone's gonna be the big client, but that's also the big customer, like students, so, cost, so, and maybe they can, they can downsize, and they're just, yeah, yeah, we have talked about that, Eric.
General.
A lot of them, I think it's by my, my, I'm just thinking, I'm just, I thought, yeah, instead of maybe calls, that's how, uh.
Which is not big, for, for the most, either, it's a lot, it's not. I guess you gotta check the volumes and go, uh, really, the statistics, like that.
I would say we were considering this, present with small answer response, and we're.
So that would again, well, business.
Is that something that comes out on our report, probably from the police department, or where we did that information?
I don't know, we, we used to have a fire, because we go to.
Fire.
Yeah, fire is one of the, the. Didn't he park here, did he, well?
You should be on the.
He's good, he's my, he's, he's there, he's on, he's on, he's on.
And, and for all that, that, a lot of fire, racing, into the.
The building's okay, so.
Maybe that can raise a lot. I mean, we're also good, really, we're good, fly, I mean, we had emergency, which kind of non-specific, accidents, now, and, or, so let me not show you the, the.
And thank you for, uh, your information as well, of, of regarding, uh, maybe that's something that we really want to understand as well, um regarding having to debate where you're going and where you want to.
I, that's, I've never, I've never, that's, never, I've never found that.
Well, and, and you know, all of a sudden, America, when, you kind of, you got a connection before you've been.
Cinder, yeah.
Um, I didn't wanna say that, but I, but it definitely sounds, I mean.
Not very often.
People, people have. Number one, and so we definitely wanted to hope.
The good news is, you know, I, I don't know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of
You didn't watch your Oklahoma Air card, Adam? These are. I did know some of their job offs depend on availability in the hospital, what all that hospital has.
True.
For, for why that, for why that. Okay.
Where, are we doing?
Yeah, I've tried a couple of things, I forgot, I know just in closely, that we have not forgotten how Manchester, drawn a few in the section, still working on, Carol left, on that to give that redesign to accommodate traffic.
What happened with that?
On, it was designed to slow down on behavior traffic through Combe and Eastern, so it was short, cut, and small. We know it looked great on paper, and it really got a lot of approval, and as soon as it became three D, construction came up, and we built the thing, it's like, this is one lane, you gotta buy a hundred, you gotta cover this. If it, if it doesn't work, so.
Really?
We don't track tires, if they're done over the dirt, and we, you know, also that, accommodate bicycle traffic, or one, two lanes to one lane, uh just looking at a couple of different options. Good, because it's caught, before it's solid, and we're, so, just needs a little bit of patience. Carol, you got with that?
Your back.
That's a dead ball. Yeah, it was, you have to trigger.
Turn the.
No, but it was, it was, yeah, the design was slow, would be the traffic with the seven industry. They did, it, it worked, it just obstructed the total.
They got, they, also, I don't know.
Two meter cars, you can't drive.
Two, three. So they all get out. Okay. Uh, Mr. Senator, I'll, I'll, we'll start back to the questions, they're good. City Attorney, that is.
I have two things, uh, one, well, the people are on, I'll take years ago, my, I remember, six, two, ten, and, that's what, but, so, I think about it, I've, I've reported that, and that I'm doing, we, 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 we,
We will miss her, but we got, we got, we can get him around, I think, as well.
You can share with her, um, keep quiet, I have one really group of guys, which is the, where you're, you're on, a couple of weeks ago, we, we got talking to her, she's one of the two best attorneys, she is amazing, and I haven't had the opportunity to share that since, but he is, he is, he did, that must be back.
We, I was on, maybe, years ago, I can't remember who, who was like. Anyway, so we had, sent some training, and we had, we had Leslie, and I had a resume, I am not, I kept reading, pulled over, before she sat down, she came in, and we started talking to her, and I looked at her, I said, Leslie, did you feel your life, you know, on it? And she said, why? I said, I read, I read, I read your resume, I read all of the things, and she comes, I said, you're smart, you're really smart.
We need somebody that's really smart.
All you know, I, 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 I say, you're really smart, it's practically, and she got it right, and then they. We felt smart, and now, of course, she's gonna get a little, some, some change, with people, up there, before she went to D C. Yeah, they're, 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 they're. Who have the, 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 the.
Yeah, that's right. She explained, pretty, right? We were at our. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, um, grab anything, um, nobody was talking, they just say, the last, the, 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 you know, the, 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 oh, God, I didn't get it. So.
People look at the.
I had to, they don't think we should.
They're stunned at some of it, so, very small, those.
The village, you guys are all, we just, I mean, we're, 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 we're,
All right, let's go down to your government departments. We'll start with Sammy.
Thank you. Just want to echo a couple of things. One being Gladstone and Brewer talking about the parking pain. Few Texas registered neighbors that are primary constituents named Susan Murphy and my wife. They got through it, but I mean, it was a lot. How long that thing going on? It feels like a year.
That was about the eight months?
Yeah, it was a long time. It did drive out while they were working on it. It was bad.
It was a challenge.
It was, it was a few rounds on for a while. But everybody was trying to get a big rain down, see water actually draining in some parts, so.
I knocked on a few doors.
Yeah.
But they were all saying this is a total mess, but thank goodness they're doing it.
Thank you.
And you felt a lot of time?
Yeah. And running the four or whatever. Oh, there's a lot of our street knowledge in there. I mean, we knew it, we were gonna do it.
They were, they were happy, yes.
People asking us, does anything that's nine points in New York really matter? It was, it was bad. Brewer talking about the park or city staff, come to the trash cans, a high street, first street, whatever. We just jumped a lot of that and you're wanting to play another business. Thank you for that. The Chums not here, so people are obligated to break back up the jail way. Not bad on offense. Say we can do a little Chums approach sometimes. County doesn't have that much experience in the county. That's a serious problem. And I think everybody, Commissioner Mills, like the other one, we're gonna resolve them. And remember, staff amongst the student or agents amongst the students, if you don't have a jail, they expect some manly people. It's a sad thing that happens in Bay. Figure out what to do, but that's where the previous county issued a plus. Hopefully currently we can get us out of that and try to figure out the best possible method. Don't be off the same stuff, you know, we're trying to save them, so. I probably wouldn't do that. Other than that, it's good to hear. I'm also calling for yourselves. Come on.
You can wait.
Then? I can, I can just keep this. The speed bumps, speed bumps, the second pumps, cushions.
Yeah.
There's a series of them. I have not heard of one of them, but I've heard a lot of them. Thank you. Particularly on Carlton, White, and just our first entity. And I don't, I don't, I don't remember how much they cost them. I know we can't do over nine thousand. In fact. Five thousand?
Five thousand dollars for the pair.
For the pair. Who said it? It is that who said it? Well, I think in the future, I mean, just with that block, these long streets, which gives people a lot of time to speed up to the next stop or sign or thing you see. And I, I, I think in the future budgets, we ought to think about a few more of these. I think that's a factor. I mean, it's not, I don't have any money there, but, but just when driving along, so. Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we, more out of western than, than, you know, just the, but I, I think that my decisions would like something red on. Because there are some in, 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 for example, Parsons Street too, so that they'd like people to slow them down. But anyway, that's one.
Wait, wait, wait. We want to talk about, please, I'm gonna proceed to the room. So. Even more. I'm gonna ask, the speed issue, the one on the problem, all that.
Think of the, the, the concrete strip?
Not that, there was one from about, was there, just right, yeah, an issue, but then right back next to them. And then, I think it was a little point. And then, I think there was a speed issue, right there. Yes.
I think they're worth it for the, for the comfort of, of the, the streets and what people really do. When that gets out there, I just think, you know, they get up to forty more problems. There are some, there are some. Yeah. Why would it last?
I think it's because. Uh, I don't know, I think the second one was our, we heard. Mr. City Mayor, if you're not making any question, I asked you, uh, should, uh, what should you have stopped signs that speak?
This isn't the new issue. We've gotten hurt, we have more distractions, everyone wants to find the best way to do this. Putting stop signs at every intersection, say people run, they're gonna be hitting them. It's traffic management, it's top of gentlemen, puts the speed bumps on the street, and then everyone uses the next three over, doesn't want the speed bumps there. And everyone's like, he said, about strategic traffic control, safety, and that will make people. And that's about it. Case two on some cars, on streets, that won't be part of the streets and others. That helps slow down. We've got six amazing parks on one of the instructions, we don't want your kids playing street or in the park. And I'm gonna stop them, it's not, they approach me all the time.
So thank you for making more road for it, I'm very pleased with that.
I think now, like you said, it's pretty, I think we have been just kind of reactive to the need, that we create three more problems down there. About I heard, so I think that's really what we hope that is, something that, I feel like that's an implication in previous leadership topics under. Always outdone, there's the police chief, and others, there's now the change, there's work of new leaders to be here, and they're gonna be able to protect the community.
And I think you're right, you're gonna switch controversial, but I think sometimes the stop sign makes sense, sometimes the speed bump makes sense. But all the time it makes sense just to look at it.
Right, get some professionals in to look at it for traffic, so you can actually make consulting, discussion with us, the stop sign here. Or, yeah, I mean, and we, we get complaints on the speed bumps too, if they're compared to, don't think they even got one.
Oh, do you?
We, we get a lot of people, the pressure, generally when you install a new one in a new area, there's forty-five percent that are happy with it, forty-five percent don't. I get that percent that don't care.
Well, you know, these, they're not that much of a bump, but it's, and it's extended out, so it's not like.
Not a car?
Yeah. Yeah, it does, yeah, you don't have to go to the dentist after you.
Yeah, that one is no matter what, it's part of the control of the speed experience. Probably not gonna do a long term, so they should do it better. Sure. My, my, I thought that was, yeah. Anyway, I don't even. Yeah, look at it. More stop signs or whatever. Yeah. That's good.
Thank you. We're quiet. Sorry. But, um, I think sometimes it's been posted in a couple of social media platforms of the construction guys, as great as they might be getting stuff done. One of them, I thought that was a pretty amateurish thing. They had a bad home park that blocked somebody's driveway for the weekend.
Oh, wow.
And, and I thought. And, and then some other guy, and I think it was on Lake Side down near, uh, where, where they, they put a wall on the street or something, they didn't, they didn't notify anybody that they were gonna do it. So they had to kind of drive through it to get it.
It was, it's asphalt, there's no oil.
Okay.
Hard shit, seal, asphalt, that's set, they don't even know nobody, but, you know.
Well, it would have been nice if they could note on the doors, saying, hey, and I understand weather changes everything, but if they could have known, they were saying, this next week, we will be doing this. Then, then you all would come out.
And that was called, also called, I'll say, we had. We can add those into the bits, but sometimes there's something on social media that aren't always a hundred percent that, maybe we don't directly get.
Well, I mean, I heard people, they, they posted a picture of which case, and it reached reality, but it hasn't, when we get to look.
Well, we're not back yet, walking drive. We have fellow answers twenty-four seven up here. As you, we, we get to two or four on Saturday, and we need that hundred and five phone.
Yeah. But anyway, they were just, and then lastly, um, in my neighborhood, I thought they liked what I assumed was just water pipes. But this has been going on for like six months now, and I'm, I'm starting to wonder, where are all the connections and where, yeah, and, yeah. Do, has the, has the Oklahoma City given us any information regarding, if you will, the master plan? Is this going to work across on Wayland, or it's crossing Wayland and it ends up on the city? And it's, it's looking like a much larger, uh, uh, activity than, than what I was expecting. Cause I was here, and probably twenty years ago now, but I, I think in our street landing pipes and, and, you know, and it's kind of the same thing, but it's, but it, it just, it looks like it's part of a bigger project than just putting new water pipes for, for this, this street. I, I don't know. And I'd be happy to call if it given truck.
I'll check with Larry and Kevin on that, they'll be ordering it.
It just, uh.
It's kind of like CIA, I'm sorry.
Well, those, those white SUVs become, I don't know, because that part goes out. Yeah, most of them, but, I mean, back, you remember when we had that water running at one of our meetings? And, and I went back through there, they invited two water hydrant on another block and brought it over, and, which is fine. But, but.
Can't relax.
But, but they, they got all the hydrant, I've seen hydra, multiple hydra laying next to each other, like they're gonna come up, but, but. That'll, it's been a long time since, and they still have totally finished where they went across concrete where Miami's got, and they grabbed it and, and, you know, it's very, they're, they're gone. I'm just wondering, not that they might call.
I'll check with Larry, yeah, I'll check with Larry, Kevin, me, I'm honoring him.
Oh, it's, uh. Um, and, and that's, that's sort of.
There's a question. I don't, on, on the industry, they had monies for road improvements, make certain criteria and stuff like that, is that, they should have do all of that?
Not at the neighborhood level. I mean, they're almost, you know, I don't know where the money is coming from, or, but, but the money that we have, road activities, been locked in our state long periods. That's, that they're talking about. They have done some, and, and I, I think we may have talked about it, but they, they had some money, this is their second year or maybe third year. Giving grants to two or two or four cities for them to, I'd have to go back to the, we're kind of in between now, but it was first for communities that getting ready to really do something big in their neighborhood, in their community. But they, they had, they didn't have the money, and they got together with the, the OU Engineering School or something, or designs, or, I mean, like redo their downtown to a tri- or because I think that was one of them, that they were doing that, all being about stuff.
With the city, the, uh, resilient cities.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put a application, and we were not selected, we were promoted by, and they only had two.
Yeah, yeah. And they're really not sure, they're really not sure whether they have the money next year, but they weren't. They know they have the money this year, but they haven't had it yet. I think it's something they want to continue now. And then, then the community can do really whatever they need and what they want to do with it. Some of that would possibly be road work, just changing something up.
No, no, but you're always on the paperwork to know those trees.
Yeah.
And, and I'm also, there's, there's, well, there, there are discussions about trying to reduce the, the, I forget what they call it, scene, scene after something that, that, that.
The people who receive calls, and I think they're like twelve, or ten, or fifteen, or sixteen, but that's still just thoughtful, it's part of the project. I think anybody that happens, not gonna want to give it away, give it back. But it's an essay that they have up grabbing to go to the next generation, and, and it's a significant step. Both in terms of what kind of money you do and cost of, the cost of the road, really, not significant. They can take texts, they can take phone calls, they can, uh, email messages, they can, they can do some multi-store building, they, they know what board's on. I mean, it's just if you stop and think, and then without first account, um, it's, it's really amazing. Plus all that same time, and the state has put together a framework, an umbrella framework that conceivably could lead to the, the state paying over, so. And we don't want that to happen, because Tulsa and we have, as they call them, the Cadillacs. And their fear is that instead of bringing everybody up to Cadillac level, that they might be, uh, stopping us from, from improvements while they get everything else up. But as I remember John Knoxville, this is the executive director of Miami, you know, we want him to better get up here, but I gotta tell you, if I'm down on that thing, or if we have an emergency, all, all I ever want, I have the same response as, as Oklahoma City, so. You gotta be sensitive to the alcohol state, that's, I mean, some, some is, not to go wrong, but, you know, some communities, especially in rural areas, like the county sheriff, we call those the county sheriff. And they might only have one guy there on duty over the weekends and whatnot, and, and, you know, they have to turn off the law, because, you know, they might have to go twenty or thirty miles away, so. It is, I mean, it's, it's that, um, that small of an operation in some parts of the state, so. But I, you know, I, I think the state's aware that this, the longer goal is to get everybody out, but we, we just have to, we can't be too cocky and all that stuff. Cause they'll say, how much money do you all have? And, and we have enough, but not, we're not over the lesson. That checks the city, the cell phones, the charges on the cell phone staff. And, and obviously, it also happens, probably a majority of the state's cell phones.
Yeah. A lot. Thank you, sir. Really.
My first item, I would like to, I don't want to follow up with my previous request, um, to follow y'all, if this is something that I've already had before, regarding the non-payers for utilities. Um, I had requested that a couple of, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. So I really want to follow up with that, because I want to understand that concept, how that happens, how we can stop it from happening and so forth. I know we ultimately had a discussion that it wasn't as bad as was initially reported, like we found many numbers and reports, but that's not possible for me. Uh, my second, I think is, um, we, uh, I had a couple of persons while campaigning that said, you know, I really want to get more involved with the city council, at least come to the, the center. I had always prepared in the yard, and I was explaining to her, I was going on a regular basis, and come late, they were, you know, cause I thought I was seventy and so forth, and so, and I was explaining. So anyway, I've come up with the idea about a little tip, sir, that I can even go put out myself, one app, like, um, in the neighborhood of Carol, yeah, uh, near, like, uh, those neighborhoods. Voluntary to have it sit in her yard, and it just be put up, like, on Sunday, or, 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 and, uh, a couple, just give a couple. I would provide it myself, but I just, I wanted to bring to you all's attention that there are so many neighbors that, um, want to be involved, not only just to know what's going on, but to really, like we said a moment ago, we need two persons to part of more. These are people that not necessarily know the names, or where, or, well, they know where, but not really to, to, to cover, to, you know. So, uh, I just wanted to share that with you. Um, and, and additional, I, I basically bumped this part the other night, um, and I found out for the first time, um, that, um, I saw six guys over there playing pickleball. And I was like, oh, wow, you know, this was the first time I really got to see people in action, really. Well, he brought his own net. He had, um, he got it from Amazon, because I didn't realize it, because I'm new to pickleball, I didn't realize that the pickleball nets are a little bit lower than a tennis court net. And so, even though we have the, the items painted on, you know, the court painted on, we don't really have available, you know, it's not suitable to actually play people on courts and so. Um, I didn't know if, I saw that the, the way that the net is in there, I didn't know if it's adjustable or anything, I know probably no one people messing with it, of course. Um, because we have people that are playing tennis, people that are playing pickleball, so I don't know if it's something that we may want to revisit at some point and dedicate a court to pickleball, where we can truly accommodate for the proper, not just the lines, but the proper height of the net, because, I mean, it was a, it was like six, in fact, I did one of them, after our battle with the Apache. And so, uh, but I, I wanted to share that with you as well, I got a video of it, so, and he gets one too, because I want him to work.
No bill of the ball.
Hi.
No bill of the ball.
No bill of the ball. And, and then, um, on a more serious, no, um, I wanted to find out, how did I, and this might be something I would just probably, uh, let me just say, uh, I wanted to follow up or do a, a, um, I'm not exactly sure of the word, but kind of a, 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 back track of how certain, um, patterns, like, um, different drives and different, um, traffic, um, patterns are established here in the village, because we have some situations where, um, and this is, this is kind of personal, but not, because I have neighbors. Um, but we have an issue where we have Cassidy School as an entrance at the far end of our street, um, and, and they have a gate, and it has large traffic coming back and forth over there. And then we have, they just established a new, um, parkway, which, from my understanding, when they first came and asked for permission to do it, it was supposed to be temporary, um, while they were doing the, the structure. And so, um, I posed the question as a neighbor, and I was told something. So they, they, this is something that I could just visit with you about and find out how I would go about finding out how, um, or, you know, how we would find out if they, when it was voted on, or if it was voted on, after, we would have, how it was approved, or the permit, you know, because this, I hadn't, I thought was good. And then my last move was very serious. Um, I saw a, that, um, just determined, um, and I had, um, uh, just several cases for, um, officers, and I was wondering where, and how, or if, um, our officer would be there. And, um, I don't know if this is the call, I'll just ask that, but, um, I was just curious about that, and I would be glad to know that last.
Thank you for the positive, both questions I was about to ask, and it's not that happened, which is why I said, but, I guess, all that, what is the plan?
Um, I don't know what kind of assistance is, Australia is still, is, is, so, 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 I would not have a, uh, uh, level, or, uh, uh, provided, or, uh, uh, science counsel for those cases, or, 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 uh, city.
Okay. I apologize. Sorry, I just, I, 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 I'm allergic about the time, uh, having that, or, or, if, if something would do it, I would want to see more of those financially, I mean, to, I'll see the city or size two, there's, there's, we couldn't do a learning tomorrow, or, or something that you put out, and, and they have, or, some, maybe take a couple of big intersections, those, uh, the end of the point, they're gonna, you're, nobody officially have election in the city, and again, sort of putting it on social media, we have a lot of calls, we have different news stories, uh, I'm sure posted in the library, I, you know. There he is, yeah, he comes in, I mean, short of going door to door, everybody in the city, I think, but, but that, so, I think you might consider, it's a nice thing for the outside to do, so, I still love that idea. I understand the capacity, it was, it was temporary, so that, we went up the drive right by him. I thought that was temporary, they were building some fast change, that would be good to know they, when they came, they get that product, I don't know, she's still pulling it out, but, but they shouldn't, when they're done with construction, they're supposed to open the drive back after, by your back behind you, but, that was supposed to be fully open, and then this other situation was, we shut down, and they're not agreeing for cropping, and then they're, and then she's like.
Yes.
That, that was a longer term thing, but this thing by her was.
Well, they get the, the, the pit hole fence thing they got put back, but, but that, I thought it was so that they could have a free lane in essence, right?
Yeah.
And there, that I thought included, uh, sort of.
Yeah, and that's, I don't understand why I'm talking around that, yeah, so I think there's some, like, Cassidy on that.
And, and we, you know, hoping we can finally do, uh, a little understanding that just because you want to kind of range out and move around, I mean, I was told as a citizen, not as on the diet, that, you know, the public street, anyone can use it, but if you don't have an entrance at the back end, uh, also to understand how that came about, because my understanding is public notifications of that, you know, of the effect of the street. You know, that, and so, and, and we already discussed the speed bumps, we got the speed bumps installed, we have, those are for people who follow, they are absolutely not for people in a eighteen wheeler, coming up the down street and max speed, because that is one of the, they, they.
I guess what I don't understand is why the city is okay with allowing eighteen wheeler towers, or, 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 gas, or, or, three lane roads onto their campus.
Well, then we had that truck problem with, 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 the guy that had the wrecker service, you know, four eighteen wheelers and that, he parked on the street, and we were going to, and, 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 cheaper than taking, taking, for, for, exactly, yeah.
I know, I know, I know, I was, I was, I was.
But I, I, I think we definitely have a code or something against us, but we, you know, we, we're giving, I just, I don't know, part of, of, like, the driving, that, I don't, I don't.
I will tell you, um, when I was coming as a resident, uh, super senior, I was told that that was an option, but, uh, when I was visiting over there, maybe, um, when I was campaigning, I, I saw a sign regarding certain amount of actels in the neighborhood. So maybe I need to do a little bit of research, understanding how some streets in the village, they, you know, certain amount of actels on a certain street, and then I was told that that happened on, so. I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow with that. Thank you. I just, I gave you that back, you know?
That was a discussion, people are required, it's always good.
But, but I lost out on this early department.
You, you spoke to some. James, can I, can I, from that off the go, right, everybody?
Okay. Question here. You guys.
Got a quick question here, you guys. I guess the last time I noticed the, for our Facebook listeners, you had a van wash after hours. And the other day, after I mean, I. Come through your door, you know, first of all. You're asking, go up, you, somebody's going to go in the door and go back and ask, you hear the fact that it's good and the flash on, free. Social, legitimate, you know, it's not a neighbor, but anyway, so somebody knocked on the door about seven o'clock, so. He starts to sell his fish and I said, wait, let me ask you a question, you guys can go to the permit. And so, yeah, and I said, okay, great, let me see it. I think my boss ended it, or, no, no, I know about it, I said, we got a bill of state, so this isn't the city, this is. So we said, we said, ask me nicely, I know the coverage, so I said, we said, so he goes, well, I don't. You have to have my view, you have to have permission to, to say, have sale or just listed it. And so I said, here's the things I can do, I don't know what my hand, actually completely. Completely, or, you know, I'm not gonna sit here, you know, don't treat us, but that's the rules, I know the city council, I'm trying to make sure. And so he said, okay, okay, well, I'm sorry, and, you know, I wasn't gonna call down on the town, but I'm trying to figure out a way that most of the people do this. Or a nice people are driving, living everything, but also they're very, very tired and it's permitted and that's all I can do. You know, it's not, you've got guys that jump up and down the alley, I've, I've seen a guy walk away before, and he goes, ah, I'm fine. Good, thank you, thank you, everybody, so on the way here today, there's a gentleman, two of them, yeah. So he was going down the street and I was on my left side, and I saw the soft line, I pulled around the side and I said, sir, can I, this would be. I said, yes, you could question, sure, yeah, ADT, I'm sure, which is right about, oh, I said, you have a permit? Uh, yes, yes, we have a permit, I said, well, we're gonna see it, please, I think my boss had it, I said, well, that, that help me, I need to see your permit. Well, I can get it and then come back and show you. I said, gas model, now, and I said, you know, we have to have a permit in the cafeteria or with you or picture, I thought I had. Somebody asks you, you gotta show it all. So it was very nice and, and, you know, again, I was very nice. I had to go and I couldn't stop, but again, I hope there's something that we need to do. To make sure people are permitted or to say you got a permit, somebody that showed a permit. Who, I don't want to call or be with it, what do you do? You know, I mean.
Different salesmen at their order, they.
Those list they.
Yeah, those list they.
We've got, we've got a lot of orders, it's perfect, it's.
I'm just quick, oh, anybody in the last five years buying, somebody thinking. Yeah, I mean, I think.
They're usually at Walmart, they don't even go.
Always got. I agree, I don't know who, I, I'm not gonna hurt people's lives, but I'm handling it successfully. They always have our board, but I don't want that.
Oh, my word.
And I know I'm not the worst at campaigning, seven, eight, no, unless I know the person, I can go hide, if that was better, I'd come in. Like you guys are from six, they're not hiding from at least the subject all night, but it looks like you just, I don't know, I mean, I believe in favor of banning it, but. That's what I'm excited about, I mean, I just don't, but I, it, it's a nuisance.
I think I told you before, there's somebody really pushing, 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 and they had almost, you know, run inside, I mean. And I can understand the tree service and the, you know, trees, if you cut down and stop saying. You know, I'm not gonna say you have a permit, but.
It's never the girl scouts or guy, I'm not playing my role, I mean, it's always.
I don't know, something we might just think about in, in the city, they give us some guidance. With that, you guys, at city hall handled their permits, do you, do you give just one out or you tell the supervisor, you have to make sure each house has a copy of it or something?
I, I definitely that, quite honestly, I said, the spheres require it to be background checked, I think it's a good thing. They still get out there and it doesn't matter whether you're outside the building, inside the city, there are things kind of come off, generally law enforcement. They buy some legally, obviously, or they're better announced for law, so, or, best, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a uniform thing.
It's a thing of the.
Yeah, and, you know, some people have no solicitor on their front door, they also have a lot of video and where else, but I didn't tell someone, I'm not, I'm not getting. It usually hits more in summer months, I think a lot of the college teams are trying to get their two thousand dollar sign. Forty, sixty hours a week, they'll get paid your commission, so I, I think this is not that I really do not love them buying in, I think this is a fading trend. Can increase.
We can take.
Just, just so you would, how we, how, what our departments are in the city and then how, you know, this individual, if he's got ten guys and gone all over the building, walked in there. Because I have found shows me heard of. It's kind of, it's kind of a challenge, because I'll just see if they're, you know.
Oh, quick question, would five months be free organization of solicitor for donations?
Well, there's specifically.
Okay, well, thank you.
So we will share. Just a suggestion, since I'm sitting here, y'all, if you always come up with, quote, quote, the guidelines and black their name, I think, and you put it in there. Water, like go around there, and so if they get enough people, they go to the door, we don't want to create a whole, a whole. You know, you don't want to create a, a whole nation, create problems, but I gotta tell you, I, I go door to door to door to door, and I keep getting kind of the same fly answer. You can't, you can't do this, and whatever, however you all wanna handle, it goes out of the bar, you know. Your trash mail, like, you know, it's, maybe that's, maybe the initial was to do that. Moms, let's, please, that's something slick, you know.
And then, sure, sure, it happens in some cities, but not. Best experience.
Yeah.
I was out, talking with the tenant workers and people, and then a guy would stop, and he was stopping some of the workers, or, you know, maybe a mom or something. And I could see that he was probably under the door, you know, inside, so, so, how did I miss it? You know, he had a, I, I, just checking, because this is private property, you know, and I don't care about that. And I, I promise, this guy was, I don't know, I don't know, I'm sorry, this guy, I mean, that guy was a creature. And he, he confronted me, you know, and I, I don't know, I served for him, he called nine hundred, I think this, I, he's originally, he's very. You know, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find out if he, if he's, you know, if he says he did it, according to me. I mean, he already moved, he already moved, he called me up and said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He takes me by the car, takes me to church, come on, you know, so anyway, it's something like that, this year, this year distrust, you know, a lot of times. You just, you just take the, the people that have disgraced, you know, or at least put up some kind of guard for that, so. You know, I think we've all, we've all been around the houses, been around the city. I'm just sorry I didn't get this going through, a lot of people did it, I just didn't know, oh, this guy drew a picture, so, you know.
I feel some.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I asked him for a drink of water the other day, I said, sure, I'll, I'll. Anyway. I appreciate y'all's, all those contributions, is there anything else you guys have? Well, quite a bit, um.
Does anybody have a handout?
Uh, do you guys have anything in mind, is it true you think we're all moving or you're.
Okay. Oh, we do.
Okay, that's it, and I should say, everybody have a great week, we have one more meeting in August. It's our first meeting.
I took a look at that, and that was about as far as I got. Let me, I'll put on my note for follow-up, but I imagine.
So I'm sure we're well off.
I would not pull up on the DVD file.
Any other, any other, any other person?